Hello and welcome back to That's So Auburn. I'm Mayor Nancy Backus. It is my pleasure to introduce three members of our wonderful Junior City Council, Jonathan Malinga, Keisner Io, and Wayland Menziah. They have big plans post-high school graduation, and I'm excited to dig into this conversation. Two of them are graduating this year, Jonathan and Wayland. And Keisner is a junior, so we'll have one more year with her on the Auburn Junior City Council. I hope we are not cutting into any prime homework time for you today. Welcome. And before we jump in to talk about your time on the Auburn Junior City Council and all of the amazing and wonderful things that you've done over the years, I want our listeners to know a bit about you. Who wants to go first?
I guess I can go first.
Wayland, go first.
Yeah, hi, I'm Wayland Menziah, and I am a senior at Auburn Mountain View High School, and I also attend Green River College as a Running Start student. I am the Chair of the Auburn Junior City Council, and I have been involved with the Junior City Council for five years now. It's really been a pleasure, learning a lot about young folks in Auburn, and I'm very passionate about the work I do and the work I'll continue to do post my time here in the city of Auburn.
Thank you, Wayland. Keisner?
I'll go next. My name is Keisner. I'm a junior at Auburn High School. This was actually my first year on the Junior City Council, but I've actually enjoyed my time here, and I can't wait to do more and learn more about everything that we do.
Excellent. And Jonathan?
And I'm Jonathan Malinga, and I am a senior at Auburn Mountain View High School. I've been the Vice Chair for the past couple of years and participate in the council for the past four years. And I have also been a part of the Legislative Youth Advisory Council for the Washington State Lieutenant Governor's Office. And it's been a pleasure to serve the youth of Auburn in many different capacities and to ensure that the voice of youth are heard in Auburn, and I think that's important.
So it's hard to believe that it's been five years, Wayland, for you, Jonathan, four for you, and Keisner, a year for you. It seems to go so quickly, and I'm going to tell you this. Jonathan and Wayland, when you both started, you were shorter than me. That is not the case any longer. You are much taller than I am. Your voices are now much lower than mine, and I have been so impressed seeing the growth in both of you over the course of these several years, what you wanted to do in the community, what you've accomplished in the community, and I just couldn't be prouder to say that I know both of you. And I really want to hear a little bit about why you got into the Junior City Council, and maybe, Wayland, I know in your case, you've gotten into politics as well. So was this a childhood dream or something that you just kind of fell into? Maybe it sounded like something fun to do to get on the Junior City Council. Jonathan, how about you? And then Wayland, and then, Keisner, I'm going to ask you another question.
Yes, so I had been advised by my middle school ASB advisor to join the Junior City Council, so I'd already done ASB for the, I guess, past two years before that. But I always knew I wanted to help people in any way that I could, and so also to continue to collaborate with other people that are my age and also to work with representatives and leaders across the state and in our own city was also very interesting to me. So I guess I would say I fell into it, but I already had wanted to help people for the past couple of years.
Excellent. Wayland, how about you?
Yeah, so I have a similar start to Jonathan. A lot of this started with ASB, Associated Student Bodies, Student Government, at my middle school, Rehner Middle School. And then I did some research online, and I found the Junior City Council. I immediately applied, and after a while, I learned that the Junior City Council was no longer running in the city as a cohesive body. And when I applied, I was among the first batch of applicants along with Jonathan, and we were able to start the Junior City Council again, give it a fresh start, and bring it back to life, which was really important to me. I think politics and leadership in general has always been a passion for me, and the Junior City Council here has helped me find that. I think that I have, a lot of my success in my outside-of-the-city roles are tied directly to participating in the city roles and the experience and the connections I get to have here, serving the youth of Auburn every day. It's something I fell into, I think, as well, but it's become my dream.
I am so proud of both of you, and you're right, you breathed new life into the Auburn Junior City Council. It was a dream back in 2012, 2013, and when I was the Deputy Mayor at that time, I had the good fortune of being the liaison from the council with the Junior City Council, and it was a lot of fun. And then, over the course of time, it morphed into several different iterations, and I think it's its best life right now because of the excitement, the dedication, your compassion and passion for this community. And it is a much better organization because of both of you. And Keisner, you came into this when it's a little bit more established. Was it scary for you? What did you think about the Junior City Council and why now?
When I got into it, it was definitely a little bit scary. I was nervous because I didn't really know what we actually would be as a part of the Junior City Council. But now, looking back at it, I'm super glad that I finally joined because I got to meet these two amazing people right here, and I got to really network a bit and learn more about the actual community and different things that I can do to improve my community instead of just complaining and talking about it, but actually doing things. So it's been definitely a great experience being a part of this council.
I'm so glad to hear that. So tell me, any of you can answer this, has your perspective on the way the city works changed at all since you joined the Junior City Council?
I definitely would say yes. My perspective on the city has constantly been shifting, but I think that's coming with a greater sense of maturity and understanding about how the world works in general. And having that inside lens has certainly helped me comprehend what it means to be in Auburn, what the city of Auburn means. And I think that my perception has changed in a good way, understanding the positives and the negatives and how they work together to create a community. I think that I have learned a lot over the five years I've been on the Junior City Council, and all those things have contributed to understanding the community better.
And Wayland, I will say, pre-COVID, you probably had better attendance at our regular city council meetings than some of our council members. You were there at every council meeting, I would say, most if not all of the study sessions, and I could see how you were intently listening. Sometimes you would shake your head in agreement, other times it was shaking from side to side because you disagreed with what was going on. But never did I get an impression that you didn't care or that you wanted to make a difference in this community and in this world. So kudos to you and thank you, because, let's be honest, not every city council meeting is going to be an exciting moment. It's just not, because that's the business that we have to do, right? Not everything that we have to do to maintain a city is going to be exciting and fun. A lot of times, it can be very mundane but very necessary. So I have always appreciated the fact that you cared enough to be here and provide public comment when it was something that you truly cared about. So Jonathan, tell me, tell everyone listening, what are some of your favorite memories or accomplishments from your time on the Junior City Council?
That's a great question.
Well, thank you very much.
There are so many to choose from, but I would probably say the top three would be, one, going to NLC in 2019 and--
National League of Cities.
National League of Cities, yes. And this past year as well. And I'd probably say, just again, I think, one thing, just to go back on the other question, one thing you learn about a city and the way it works is that it's all part of collaboration. And I think being a part of the Junior City Council, that is just ingrained in the city, but also at the state level, also at the national level. So going to NLC and being able to collaborate with other individuals that are wanting to change their city and improve it just helped me to understand how we can bring some of those changes to Auburn and continue to improve it. And also co-hosting the Town Hall and helping to plan that, the Youth Town Hall, that was one of my most favorite accomplishments, again, to be able to see how do you plan a Town Hall and how do you invite people and members, and what do people want from their community? What are they looking for? And to go through that entire process was just very spectacular for me and very life-changing. And then the third one was going to Teen Talks. So we had Teen Talks, which was a youth forum held at the Auburn Parks and Recreation in the Rec Center a couple of years ago, and that was a great opportunity, again, to just hear straight from youth all over Auburn, what they were looking for and what issues that they thought were important to them. So I think those three were my favorite, but it's very hard to choose just three.
Well, I'm glad that you have challenges trying to identify which one is your favorite, because that means your time with us has been meaningful. I will forever remember that trip to NLC and the fact that our plane, our flight was canceled. Do you remember that?
Oh, yes.
And trying to find a hotel that was going to keep us all, because there were at least eight or nine of us that night, and the fun that we had trying to get something to eat for dinner as well. You were all real true sports about all of that, and I always remember sitting downstairs in the lobby, eating whatever we could find, but just really having a good time, laughing and reflecting back on what we had done that week. And, you know, you as youth ambassadors will go to different sessions than we as the adults will go to, and just hearing how meaningful the work and the discussions that you had, I was once again impressed that that level of conversation was taking place with young people. And I'm just really thankful that you both were there and that you enjoyed that and that you have made Auburn proud in those moments. And Keisner, I don't think you've had, have you had a chance to go to NLC yet?
Not yet.
All right. That should be on your list--
Yes.
--because at National League of Cities, the youth program, I think, is so important to making sure that we are a vibrant city, right? We as adults are truly just caretakers of this earth. We are caretakers for you as the next generation or future generations, and so hearing from you and your ideas on what we should be doing is invaluable. So you've only had a year on the council.
Yes.
Maybe you have a memory that you would like to share, and if not, how about what would you like to accomplish in the upcoming year?
I do actually have a memory. Aside from all our pizza party talks after each of our meetings, those fun conversations we've had, there was this one moment that actually stuck out to me. It was when Francesca from the Teen Clinic came to visit us and gave a little talk about what Teen Clinic is, and we all had such great ideas to give to her for how she can actually advertise and better promote Teen Clinic to different students and schools in Auburn.
What is Teen Clinic?
Teen Clinic is, I'm not gonna, I'm not that good at describing it, but Teen Clinic is this organization that actually provides almost like ways that students or teenagers can protect themselves sexually. So it's just something that they, it's a resource that they have. But from that conversation, that actually led to actual action being taken, because later on, that week in my school, she was actually tabling, and then later on, my best friend Gabriella was actually, she actually got to become a part of the group that Francesca created, which is basically just different students from different schools coming together and figuring out ways that they can actually spread the hope and the message that Teen Clinic has. And so it was just so cool to see that conversation that we had together become actual reality and seeing other people that I know becoming a part of that, too.
Nice.
But regarding accomplishments for this coming year, I just want to be as involved as possible, so whatever opportunity that the city council provides, I will do whatever I can to just accept it and just keep giving, because I know that, me personally, I have so much to give, and I want to do as much as I can to help our city and our community and just to be as involved as possible, and also to get other voices with our city council. Considering that we've had four seniors that's going to be graduating this year, I want to be able to get more voices onto the council.
Nice. And so, speaking of voices, I'm going to assume that you're going to have Jonathan's voice on one shoulder and Wayland's.
Yes.
What would Jonathan do or what would Wayland do, right? Will be in your mind.
That will be my mantra.
It might be a little scary sometimes. So Wayland, tell me about your favorite memory.
I mean, I've had so many. I mean, a lot of stuff happens in five years, including a global pandemic, which just changed our entire outlook.
Oh, that.
Changed our entire outlook on the world as a whole, which also, you know, changed memories and how they take place. But I'll start pre-pandemic. I definitely enjoyed 2019 NLC. I enjoyed 2023 NLC as well.
It was the sodas in the lobby that did it for you. I know that.
The collaboration, I think, at 2019 NLC was the highlight there. I got to know Jonathan and a former member, Brandon, very well over our time spent there, and then the city staff as well, city council members, you, mayor. It was very interesting. The programming was interesting, but I do say I enjoyed the programming a little bit more at 2023 NLC, especially hearing from First Lady Jill Biden. That was very, very interesting. I enjoyed the messaging that took place of compassion, accountability, and hope at the 2023 NLC conference. But pre-pandemic, there was, you know, it was a lot of laughs, but then, you know, we really got to work virtually over COVID, and I'm proud that we were able to stay together during the COVID pandemic and that we held regular meetings. We heard from former Deputy Mayor Claude de Corsi at every meeting, and he gave us, you know, thorough updates and told us what the city was doing, which was really important, because I think that it was really hard to stay involved when there was so much to worry about during 2020 and 2021. I was really grateful for that continued support, and I love Zoom now. It is a great tool. I'm so glad that our pandemic was able to give us Zoom as a tool. And then, more recently, the new membership on the Junior City Council has definitely been a positive accomplishment and work from the Junior City Council side of things. We have new members. Keisner, you're one of them. We have Emily Helms. We have Savannah Lewick. They're all our newest members on the Junior City Council, and that's been a struggle all five years, getting membership, but now the dais is full during our meetings, and that's definitely something that feels good, especially as about, four of us are about to leave. It definitely feels good that we have people there to continue the good work.
So a lot of times, when someone leaves an organization, there's an expectation that they find their replacement. Have the two of you, Jonathan and Wayland, have the two of you been talking about Junior City Council encouraging your friends or others to apply and to get involved?
I definitely have some ideas. There's people I'm talking to who are very committed to young folks and public service. They want to learn. I think that's really important, people who want to enter a space to learn and grow. I will definitely be searching here very hard this month, because this is my last month here, along with Jonathan and Brissette and Janine, but we're, I definitely think that's important, and the search is ongoing.
How about you, Jonathan?
Yes, I've continued to, of course, advertise the Junior City Council as a great opportunity to learn about civic engagement, about working your community, volunteering, and so many more things. But we've also started the Junior Advisory Committee, which is supposed to act as a representative body for the youth of Auburn in schools, and that would consist of ASB members from every middle school and high school to each. And so that's also supposed to be almost a pathway or a gateway to becoming a Junior City Council member. And that way, you find, again, more ASB members or any student that's interested in Junior City Council can hopefully retain one of our spots. But definitely advertising it and definitely telling people all of the great benefits of the Auburn Junior City Council.
Okay. Keisner, what are you hoping for in this next cohort of Junior City Council members?
I'm hoping that we get enough members so that we actually have a full council, but I actually just want us to do more together and learning more about what we can actually do in our community and just, once again, just being as involved as possible with everything that happens here.
Excellent. Now I'm going to kind of pivot away from your work on the Junior City Council, and tell me, tell us, what you do when you are not at City Hall, when you are not, well, you can't not be an Auburn Junior City Council member. That just stays with you, of course, but tell us what you do when you're not fulfilling that role.
So when I'm not at City Hall, I like to play tennis. I was actually the captain of the boys' tennis team at Auburn Mountain View High School for the past two years. I also conduct original biomedical research at Fred Hutchinson Cancer Center in Seattle and also read a lot of books. That takes up a lot of my time, but that's what I do in my spare time.
So you slack off.
Yep.
Sounds like, huh, huh, huh. All right. Keisner, what about you?
At home, I take care of my two little siblings. My little siblings are Gio and Kia. Gio, he's six years old, and Kia, she's three, so I just love playing around with them, actually helping them grow, and it's so fun to see how much they've grown. And it's so crazy, my little brother, he's already six, and he's at school and he's enjoying it and he's having fun, he's meeting so many new people, and I just love seeing that. Aside from that, at school, I'm just as involved. I'm in ASB. I'm the current Executive Secretary. I'm in DECA, which stands for, I don't want to get this wrong, Distributive Education Clubs of America. Yes. I've been in that for like two years now, and we've been competing at state, and I'd like to say that I'm pretty good at DECA. I've won first place at state two years in a row now, and I hope next year I get some glass at the international level.
All right. So tell me, what do you compete in? What category do you compete in?
So I compete in the project management category. My first year, I did community awareness, and me and my best friend created a podcast, actually, and it was called "The Art of Smelling the Roses," where we focused on mental health and the different aspects of the teens' mental health, and we had different guests just talking about ways that we can, just making it very relatable to teens and showing them that they're not alone in their struggles. For my project this year, we did it on financial literacy, and we created a book, a children's book, called "Fit in Olive at the Scholastic Book Fair." So like scholastic. We made the book, we printed it, and we actually gave them away to fourth-grade students. We visited Lakeview Elementary and Washington Elementary, and we made a whole lesson about it, and we gave them the books, and we gave them $100 so they can actually use their skills in real life. But through DECA, I've learned so much, and it's just so great to have such cool ideas and actually make it happen. So DECA's definitely been a great part of my life outside of the Junior City Council.
Good. So you've been slacking, too.
Yeah.
So Wayland, help me out here. Tell me that you've been doing something when you're here at City Hall.
I think the answer to that is I do too much. I'm certainly hyper-involved in our community. Through Junior City Council, I was appointed to the Auburn Transportation Advisory Board as their high school member, and actually, the same year I was appointed, I became Chair of the board--
And at what age? What age were you, Wayland?
Oh, that was, I was 15. Yep, yep, I was Chair of that board at 15, and it was definitely a learning path for me. I now really enjoy transportation policy and learning about implementation and what cities are doing for safety and things like that. And that was one of my other roles within the city here. I was also very involved in my high school. I do Running Start now, but I was on ASB for all of my years throughout high school as the class president, two times, and then I was the Executive Vice President for the school's ASB my junior year. And then I stepped away and did Running Start, and I worked in the state senate, which was an absolutely wonderful opportunity. I'm involved in the political side of things. I've worked on local campaigns and statewide campaigns for public office, which is where I think a lot of my passion is. All of my time is filled. I was the Chair of the Washington State High School Democrats, and I am a state committee member for the Washington State Democratic Party. And I love being involved, but I love the idea of helping people. I enjoy music. A lot of people, I don't talk about like my actual hobbies that aren't like work-related very often, but I love music. I play clarinet, bass clarinet, and a little bit of saxophone. I also enjoy cooking. I cook a lot of food. It's relaxing to listen to music and cook food and take a mental break from all of the things I think about all the time. And I also enjoy like exploring our state. I love going on drives. I love going to our different nature places, especially within the city of Auburn. But yeah, that's what I do outside of here. I don't do cool cancer research. I don't do these awesome DECA programs, but I love to do the little things that make a big difference.
Well, I hope you know that I was really being facetious when I said, it's a shame that none of you do anything outside of your work on the Junior City Council, because you are making me tired just listening to the long list of accomplishments and activities and how you care about this community and how you care about your fellow students, your families, the environment, the political world. It can be a scary place right now, and I think there are some people who just think the world has gone downhill and that there is no hope for recovery. I will tell you that sitting here, talking with the three of you, has renewed my faith in the fact that we are going to be okay. There are days that are really scary. I think we can all agree with that.
Yeah.
But you, my friends, are making this world a better place, and I have no doubt that I will be seeing much of you in the future, because you will, your name will be everywhere, your accomplishments will be everywhere, and I am going to be able to say, I knew them when they were on the Auburn Junior City Council. And I hope that the Junior City Council in some way will stay with each one of you, that you know that you always have a home to come to, and that there will be here people to support you in all that you do. And our time together is coming to an end, but I wanted to, I wanted to leave it an opportunity for each of you to share any final thoughts that you have.
I'll go first. I've heard that saying a lot. I want to say I know you when, but I say to people, I want you to know me now, and I want you to know me then, because I think that it's important that people talk about, remember the little people. I don't think anybody is a small person and insignificant.
Nobody is a little person.
They're not an insignificant person in our community, because they're a very important part that, you know, is interwoven into the fabric of our communities. I also want to say, it is June, it is Pride Month. I'm very happy to be celebrating as an openly gay man, that this is who I am, this is who our community is, that we accept and we love everyone here in the city of Auburn, and that's why I'm proud. To all the queer people, especially queer kids, queer young folks, but even our straight allies, our straight friends, people who are still coming around the bend, our community is better because you are here. You are valued, you are heard, but most importantly, you are loved. Happy Pride. Wherever I am, I'll always be a community member here in Auburn.
Thank you, Wayland. Keisner?
It's just so crazy to me right now that little me wouldn't have thought that I'd be here with two wonderful people and talking to the mayor, because I'm actually an immigrant. I moved here when I was like nine years old, and I've been, I wanted to actually be a part of Junior City Council back then, because I just wanted to be as involved as I possibly could be in this community, so I could feel like I actually belonged. And look at me now, I'm here talking to all of you, and it just feels so surreal. now, I'm here talking to all of you, and it just feels so surreal. But it just reminds me that as long as you just keep trying, keep moving, keep taking every opportunity that you can that interests you, you can actually get where you want to be. And I'm just very thankful to be here right now.
And I just wanted to reiterate that this has been an incredible experience, an amazing experience to be on the Junior City Council, and also that the work that you do here and the skills you learn apply to all fields. So I'll be going into health and hopefully oncology, but the skills you learn here can still apply. So I hope to be studying health inequities and working to repair those in all different types of communities. But those are the skills that I can use, because I've been on part of the Junior City Council. So I just also wanted to reiterate that, as long as you want to help people, as long as you're a leader, as long as you have that drive that wants to help somebody, you can thrive here on Junior City Council and thrive in all parts of leadership. So, yeah.
For all of you that are listening, I hope that you agree with me that the three amazing young people that we just had the opportunity to hear from are special, but so representative of the wonderful and amazing young people that we have everywhere in this community. Don't ever count a young person out. Stop. Ask them their opinions. You won't be disappointed. You will be pleasantly surprised. And if you are someone who is interested in the Auburn Junior City Council, please contact our office and find out how you can apply. I promise you, it will be a challenge, but one that you will love and one that you will never forget. And Jonathan, Kaiser, Wayland, I promise you, I will never forget any one of you, because you have a place in my heart. I am so proud of who you are, and thank you for joining us today.